All right, I will call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone who's here today. We will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning, Mr. and Mrs. Harris.
Afternoon.
Afternoon, Mr. and Mrs. Harris. Mr. Harris, you're a veteran of the Navy or the Army?
Navy.
Would you lead us in the pledge, please? I need a motion to approve the agenda. Approved in a second, are there any limits to the agenda? Any questions? All those in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye. Prose nay? I have it, the agenda felt unanimous. As was stated, Mr. Martin is on his way tied up in traffic, I believe, and he'll be joining us in a few minutes. I'd like to kind of, has any idea how long?
He didn't know, as you just said, he's on, he's in traffic at the lights, so I'm guessing right out here he's...
Okay. The next item is an important item that we want to have ready. It's a memorandum of understanding, Mr. Stevens? Would you like to make this?
Yes, absolutely. We have had discussions specifically in the past six months with the representatives from the Sumner-Remer Museum, specifically Mr. Leonard Harris and Mrs. Harris. And it was requested that the museum, its artifacts, and the oversight of such become the responsibility of Berkeley County Schools. And we did need to have a memorandum of understanding saying such, written up, drawn up, approved. We've gone through the procedure for all of that, and I'm happy to say that we have an MOU that everybody agrees to. And that should be before him to be able to sign as president of the Berkeley County School Board. So you will have the MOU here in front of you to be able to sign. I just wanted to be able to say how much we appreciate Mr. and Mrs. Harris and all those that took time to put together the artifacts that make up the museum at our Remer Building. It's an impressive accumulation of history. And I am excited to be able to be entrusted as one of those as caretaker for that moving forward. So I think this MOU lays out the understanding for Berkeley County Schools. And I'm very appreciative of the trust put forward for us to take that on. So that is the summary of that. I think at the end of the meeting, there will be an opportunity for you to sign the MOU. And we'll be able to move forward and say that that has been taken care of. I think our goal was actually this week to be able to have that done, so we could address that on Saturday.
Ron, you need to make a note about the address.
Very good, very good. One thing that went by lawyers and me and everybody, there was one place in the MOU where it was to be listed Berkeley County Schools address, and it had the wrong address. So we are going to have to amend that, and that's that's the one piece that we have to fix on the MOUs.
Yeah, also know Dr. Alfonso? You've been very active in doing, putting this together, would you have any comments? Would you like to say something, ma'am? Dr. Alfonso is inclusion and I'm having a brain freeze. I'll give you a chance to think about it while I'm sitting here stumbling about.
So this happened, this started actually last year. Mr. Murphy gave Mr. Williams and I a tour of Martinsburg and some rich black history that we did not know of. And we're both graduates of Martinsburg High School and grew up in Martinsburg. So as a result of that, I got to meet Rosalind Roman and Mr. and Mrs. Harris. And we started these conversations, we went to the Remer Center. Mr. Harris revealed then his intentions for the museum with Berkeley County Schools. And at that point, we just began the process of coordinating that. And so the MOU was written and approved, and here we are, ready to announce it before the public after being board approved at the premiere on the 17th. And it's really exciting and historical monumental action for Berkeley County and for West Virginia. It's the only county that has anything like this in it, and I'm really happy to be a part of it. And for it to happen during Black History Month, it's just, it's all very special.
And Mr. Wright has been promoting the event about Remer, go ahead and give us a few words about that.
Well, as was noted, this Saturday, there's going to be a documentary about the Sumner Remer School, the history, the Harris's contributions throughout the years for that. It's going to have also several graduates or attendees of the Remer School, including the first black person to graduate from Martinsburg High School. Gloria Carter is going to be in that as well, her mother's going to be a part of it. It's an opportunity, a free opportunity for the community to learn about the history of Berkeley County, West Virginia, and even in the United States. It's at two o'clock at the Apollo, as mentioned again, it's free, it's a great opportunity for our students also to learn. If I were a teacher, I might assign a report or something that they may need to write after watching the documentary. And then an opportunity to learn about the rich history that the Harris's and many others have contributed to this county and to our society that's many times forgotten.
Mr. Martin, do you want to add anything?
Having Sorry, I'm so sorry. Having gone up here what has happened from the early ages to where students went on into high school and you know, us was at the other and then to where we have come now. And through your all's fruitful efforts. And Gloria Carter, you know, she's a friend, she makes me so proud of what has been accomplished over the years and what you all have put into the Sumner Remer to instill and to keep that information that is so vital to our community for the youth to come. That's the most, one of the most important things. So I think Saturday will be a good experience. And it's been long overdue to put that into some kind of form documentary that we all can see and learn from. So thank you.
I'm just excited, like Mr. Alfonso said, that this is a unique opportunity for us in Berkeley County to have such a museum and heritage display for our students to see in Berkeley County. So I've never been to it, so I'm excited to actually go to it and have us be a part of Berkeley High School. And thank you for trusting us to carry on in the legacy and the history, so for generations to see.
I appreciate staff, superintend, Dr. Alfonso, our lawyer who's in Brooklyn town, for getting this document ready. We didn't want to be buried in the minutes. We wanted a more formal document to protect what is down there and for future boards to understand the obligation we feel towards the heritage of the Remer Center, long after all of us are out of the picture. So on Saturday, we'll have this document that we'll present to a copy of it. It will make a part of the program on Monday. But we want to make sure that, this board wanted to make sure that it's more than just in the minutes. It's going to be a formal legal document showing our obligation to our community, both black and white, that we retain all of the items that has been gathered together there. Dr. Spencer, to the teachers that are up there. The approach that sometimes the, I think the school showed a lot of progressive, innovative ways of approaching things. I know that young ladies, when they got pregnant in the white schools, were kicked out of school. I saw and heard tales of the people who experienced young ladies, and that Mr. Remer encouraged them to come back to school and get their diploma. So it was a whole different approach there in the school. And it wasn't all negative, as they handed down books, the racially insensitive books that were passed down to the children. There was also a lot of dedicated teachers. The, I remember Georgie Thompson at South Junior High when I was going there. Georgie was younger than us, but he must have been a pretty bright kid because they jumped him up, and he was one of our best students in our class. So a lot of innovation in that school. You had to be innovative to survive at that time in that atmosphere of segregation. I know Leonard told me stories when we interviewed you about back in the day. Veterans couldn't go to the local park. Here we had a memorial park, had listed on people who had sacrificed their life for our country, but yet their families couldn't go into that park. And all kinds of examples that this history will be preserved. And you don't want to see history repeat itself. And to keep that, you have to remember what happened before. And if you see it happening again, you recognize it as such and you are in a position to challenge it. Mr. and Mrs. Harris, do you have something you'd like to say? I've put you on the spot.
I just want to say really thank you for the board because our concern has always been that what happens to this museum when we're no longer there. And you know, the thought, the thought of it not existing anymore is really heart wrenching. Because I know from Leonard, he says and thinks about it, it's like his baby. And so, you know, we just, we're just very happy to see it continue. And, you know, I think we just need to figure out how the tours are going to go because, you know, we just did a tour on Saturday morning for these ladies with, they're called Sister Acts. And they were just so amazed by the history that was there at the school. And I even had somebody ask me, said, what part do you have in this school? Because they were surprised that I actually went to this school. And it was somebody I graduated high school with, you know. So I just think it's fantastic that you all have agreed to do this. And it will live on in Berkeley County.
I think that probably when we get this officially, the paperwork and everything, and later on or whatever, we've discussed some other different ways of how to take care and to work together in this program.
I developed a lot of the pictures with my students, your brother Pat, and we, that are down there on the wall and hanging on the walls of the features and stuff. Just, I'm glad we're not doing things that way anymore. But there are lessons to be learned from that, that we should always be willing to examine, reexamine what was the practice. Because like I said, there were a lot of great teachers, educators in that building. And a lot of good students graduated from that school and went on and became leaders in the transformation in this community that occurred in this country with the guidance of Dr. King. And I just, you know, we don't want to forget those leaders. And that school developed that leadership. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Damon Wright, would you like to make a motion to adopt and approve the memorandum?
I approve that we adopt and accept the memorandum of understanding and move forward with supporting the Sumner Remer School.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Prose nay? Motion is adopted unanimously, thank you. We'll have copies for you on Saturday of the document. I don't know that you must be signing anything yet, do we have Leonard's? Okay, good, good. Leonard's going to sign it now. Well, we'll be changed in the last page.
Jess, do you have the, it's all good?
Yeah.
Catch him on the way out, that'd be great. She's got it right there for you.
Okay.
You'll be the first, thank you, Mr. Harris. While he's doing that, I would like to go ahead and transition us to the next item. Yeah, I know that time is of essence, you know, we we have certain members of the board that have other commitments, and I'm very conscious of that. So it was a request of this board for us to have a mid-year monitoring report available as far as all of our all of that up to this point, I'm sorry. Our benchmarks, I was trying to think of benchmarks, all of our benchmarks is rubbing off on me, Pat, my goodness, you got me a little bit going over here. So, yes, I will, I will, always do. But it is, it is for our mid-year benchmarks so that we can compare and see if we have had, where we stand compared to where we were at the beginning of the year. And we needed to wait until the mid-year benchmarks were completed, so that we could take a look at all the data. And I have asked Robin to put all of that together here in a nutshell, try to give you an overview of those types of things. So without further ado, I'll let Robin take it from there.
Good afternoon, President Murphy, Superintendent Stephen, board members and administrative staff. Superintendent Stephen said we did complete the major benchmark on January 26th. And so the data that you'll be looking at today, high level data, high level district data, and it's a comparison from beginning of the year to middle of the year. The slides will reflect, it'll say fall benchmark, winter benchmark. The data that you're going to be looking at, it comes from three different formative assessments, I Ready for reading and math for K-5, IXL for 6 through 11, that's E-L-A-M-F. And then you have the PSAT for grades nine through, I have 12, but that should be nine through 11, so I apologize there. As with everything we do, it relates back to our mission vision for the week, where we are hoping to provide our learners limitless opportunities and multiple pathways to success, all driven by our core beliefs. Our agenda today, as I said, we're looking at the big picture, the high level, district level data for our major district benchmarks. And I already defined the I Ready, IXL, and PSAT, our expectations for growths, celebrations, and next steps we're moving forward. The first day that we're going to look at is the I Ready, reading and math. Just to remind you, this assessment, this formative assessment is new this year for our students in grades K-5. It's actually not just new for the students, it's new for us at the district level, it's new for us at the building level, the classroom level. The one thing that I can say before we move into looking at the data that this has been a formative assessment that has truly been embraced by all stakeholders. The district level, there's a seamless thread from the district to the building, to the classroom in terms of the, looking at the data, using the data, it helps provide the teachers with a heavy lift in terms of, okay, I have this data now, why? So it really does an excellent job of helping our teachers to make the data actionable so that you can see the impact in the classroom. And also too, the vendor themselves do an outstanding job of providing support and training for us at all levels. So I wanted to just, you know, share that information as we move forward. But, and so I think as we turn the page, the data, the way it's broken down on the page, what you're going to look at, you're going to look at both reading and math, side by side, by grade level. So when we look at the I Ready benchmark comparison for kindergarten, oh, sorry, I'm not turning, I have to remember that I'm clicking too. So as we look at our kindergarten data from the fall to the winter, and really what you want to focus on is, you can see that the chart has on or above, one year below, or two or more years below. So really, actually, you want to look at the change with the on or the above. All of the data is important, all of the data can tell us the story and what we need to do or do differently. But I really want to focus on the story of growth that we're seeing from beginning of the year to middle of the year. So when we look at this, just here, the light blue represents the fall for the the reading and the winter represents the the dark blue represents the winter. And then for the math, it's the magenta and then the purple. But when we look at this, from the beginning of the year, we had 20% of our students in kindergarten on or above grade level. And now, in, with the most recent benchmark, we have 67% of our students on or above grade level. So that's a 47 percentage point gain. And you will see our students then that were one year below grade level, you see a drastic decrease from fall to winter in terms of our students that were one year below. So majority of the students have moved over into the on or the above. At kindergarten, they do not report out two or more years below grade level because that data is not available in kindergarten. When we look at the math, you can see we have a 34 percentage point gain from fall to winter for our students. And you can once again see that we have a significant decrease in terms of the students that were performing one year below grade level from fall to winter. Moving forward, in terms of looking at our first grade, you can see that our first grade students have a 30 percentage point gain in reading, and they have a 24-point percentage gain in math. And once again, you can see now, we do have the two or more years reflected on the slides, but you can see that we are having significant decreases from the one year below and the two or more years below in terms of our percentages. Moving to grade two, to the secondary data, you can see we have a 23 percentage point gain in reading, and we have a 14 percentage point gain in math. Third grade, we have a 13 percentage point gain in reading and a 16% percentage gain in math.
May I ask for a question?
Sure.
That's all right, we ask you questions.
I'll take your questions.
Okay, thank you. In this progression, as the two or more years increases?
It does.
And I'm now glad, it's very positive to see the growth that we, as we progress through the grades, we'll see this right-hand column of two or more years lagging and growing. And I was just wondering what could we do? Because I've seen this before in other instruments. What do you all talk about doing to cut back on those two or more year lagging?
Well, Mr. Murphy, we'll kind of hit that towards the end of the presentation with that. But even though, you know, yes, you know, in the fall, if we think just example for the second grade, in the fall, we had 30% of the students at two or more years below. We cut that in half, you know, here at the winter benchmark. So that is significant movement. And then also too, if you look the same, or more, slightly more than the same in terms of that, that two or more years below in second grade. So we definitely are making very, very strong strides towards moving those students. And most of them probably are moving to the one year below. But some of them are also probably moving to on or above, you know, just depending on, you know, their performance in the classroom.
I was just comparing the previous year's second grade percentages, like the second grade in reading was at 14% on the dark blue. And in the third grade, it's 20%, and of course, it reflected their own size. So it just seems that our tail end gets stretched out more as the years go on. And any instrument I've ever watched, I was just wondering.
I'll get to that at the end and address that with that. As we move into third grade, this is sort of not just a pivotal time in looking at the data, but it's also a pivotal time in instruction in the classroom because we're going from the primary to the intermediate. And just some things to keep in mind when we're looking at this, as we move up into the upper grades, reading is harder to move students in terms of gains because the text becomes more complex. And that means that, you know, there are fewer text features that the students could use to kind of aid and support their reading. And the knowledge demand grows greater, vocabulary becomes more difficult. So with that being said, I just kind of want to point that as we start moving into looking at the data in terms of grades three, four, and five. Also too, when we start looking at, especially at three, four, and five, I want you to think back to where these students were when they were first entering school. Third grade, if we think back to when COVID hit, these were our students that were in pre-K in third grade. So they went out in March of pre-K. So then they had the opportunity to be brick and click students that following year, in that kindergarten year. So we did probably have about a 50-50 split, I think if I remember correctly at that time, Ron or Tanner, you guys remember? Better. But I think, so when you look at this, these next three grade levels, third, fourth, and fifth are probably the students that were the most impacted by COVID, especially grades four and five in terms of missing out on those foundational skills. And if we really drill down, and I do have some of that data that I'm not sure if I included in here, but like, for example, phonics is extremely weak in terms of a reading domain when we look at grades four and five because they missed those foundational skills. And right down to some of the numbers and operations when we look at the math. So before we really delve into the data, it's not necessarily a different picture, but I just sort of wanted to make those points as we move forward. So for third grade, we gained 13 percentage points in reading, and we gained 16 percentage points in math between the two benchmarks. At fourth grade, we gained eight percentage points in reading and 13 percentage points in math. And at fifth grade, we gained six percentage points in reading and 10 percentage points in math. Melissa, I'm sorry, I just noticed your hand is raised.
Yeah, sorry, I literally just raised it, so you're fine. I was noticing when I'm looking at the percentages that you have in the bar graph, the ones that are in the dark blue that are for the current testing that we've just done, like for third grade, there's like 10 percentage points that's not even equated for, so.
I'm sorry, I mean, okay. I'll go back and correct that.
No, 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 I just, I didn't know, do we know where they stand? Do we know where those, which level on or above, one year below, two or more, do we know where they, where those are?
At this point in time, no, I'd have to go back to the data and look at it.
Okay, okay, I just, that's, and that's not the only number that I saw, there's a few other ones that it's like one over or one under, so I just wanted to make sure you knew that, that's all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, all right, thank you. Which graph would she refer in this? I think she was saying, talking in third grade one?
Third grade, but please don't let it progress.
Oh, okay, I got you. And, and honestly, it could just be an oversight of my part because I was trying to condense the data from the.
Absolutely.
It, it's sort of having a, they had like, usually they, you show you the early green, late green, and then two, three or more years below and two years below.
Uh, and that's what I figured.
Added on my part, so I do.
Yeah, no, and that's what I figured. I just wanted to make sure you saw it, that's all.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate you putting this together as quickly as you did.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And I just, I really wanted to, I really wanted to have, have a different look because I think sometimes when they do the stacked bars, it, it makes it very difficult to see the growth that's actually occurring. So I really wanted to, to, to reflect the, the growth that was actually occurring on the positive side, as well as even though we do still have, and we do recognize that we still have students that are performing a year below and two years below, but really also I wanted you to see the significant decrease that, that's occurring there as well. In, in some grades more so than others. Any other questions?
Not for me.
All right, thank you. All right, when we look at I Ready, I Ready, students have two, two goals. They have a, have a typical growth goal and they have a stretch growth goal. The typical growth is equated to one year's worth of growth. And the stretch growth is, uh, more than one year's worth of growth. And when we look at this, you know, we want our students to all meet that one year's worth of growth, but we do know that we have students that are performing below grade level. So it's really important that we focus on that stretch growth for those students. As well as if we really, I guess in our last I Ready training, that if we really want to see our performance change, we want all of our students to really be striving and, and pushing our students for that stretch growth. Because that's where we're going to see significant change in our student performance. But the, but each student, as I said, has two growth goals. They have one, the typical growth, and they have the stretch growth. To date, just with our data that between fall to winter, thirty five percent of our students have met the typical growth. So thirty five percent of our students have already achieved one year's worth of growth in reading. And then we have fourteen percent of our students, um, that have met the stretch growth in reading. If that is able to, yeah, it's like that more than one year's worth of growth already.
Good. I, I, I just wanted to pull in here the fact that the, the pink square, the fourteen percent, that's, we need to push those numbers up because those are the numbers of the kids that are going to make up ground. They've made up more than one year's growth because when we looked at all this, all we're talking about is growth. We're not talking about the final score, the percent, or the, or the percentile, what they're, what they're going to score on. What we're talking about is we have a certain number that will be low grade level. And in order for them, you, you ask this all the time, why are we striving for one, one uh, grade level, uh, of achievement? Well, I mean, that's, that's the minimal. That's what schools are set up to, you know, gain one grade at a time. But we have to figure out how we're going to maximize that and get more than a year's growth. And that's where the stretch growth term comes in. And I really like that term that they use because that's showing us that fourteen percent of our students have already achieved more than one year's growth. So we are reaching those students, we are pushing students out there. Thirty five percent have achieved, uh, the one year. We hope at the end of the year, our goal was for that blue to be, uh, at a hundred percent. We want every student to have gained a year. But more than that, we want every student to get up to grade level. And that's where the pink is going to come in. Um, so.
As our students, um, go up in years, in grades, and the stretch growth lessens. And, uh, it seems to be making.
Well, right now, their, their percent in terms of being proficient is, is less. But those are the students then that it's going to be very important, those, those, those students that are one year below, those students that are two or more years below, that we really are focused on really helping them to attain stretch growth. And the one thing that, that in our most recent training that they shared with us, they said that a, a student who achieves stretch growth two years in a row are on the path to be proficient. So if a student obtains that stretch growth two years in a row, it is putting them on the path towards proficiency.
Good.
Now.
I'm hoping there's not.
They, they, uh, going back to the fifth grade.
Yes.
I was, could you go back to the?
Oh, I'm sorry, you want me to actually go back?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Um, but Mike, I understand why you're talking about the stretch growth, but first my question is, we took the test in September for the first time.
Beginning of September.
And now you just did this before the Christmas break.
Uh, January, January fourth through January twenty sixth.
Okay, so the January, so January, so you're having there like five months.
Half.
Yeah, half.
Yeah, so when you say a year's growth, are you actually talking about their, they've, they've grown five months worth of work?
Yeah, they've grown a hun- they've grown a hun- they, they've grown like a hundred, that, they've grown like, I'm, like, if you take it fifth, five months, they've grown ten months. So if we put it in terms of month, the students that have met their, that those thirty four percent of the students that have met their typical growth have grown a full ten months here at mid-year. And the way they do that, for example, when a student takes a test, let's say, for example, I, I took a test, the test in the fall and my typical growth was twenty points. If I were, um, mid-year, you know, that I'd be able to expect you to grow ten, ten points. Or, you know, but if I hit my twenty points, my typical growth is twenty at mid-year, I've already made my one year's worth of growth. So typically, when you're looking at students and they drill it down to students, because each student will have a number that is their typical growth and a number that is their stretch growth. Right now, in the classroom, teachers will be looking to see every student, if they're on track to meet their typical growth, should be at half of their, their total, that their total.
Yeah, that's, that was one question I had, but the other, the other one is, as I look at, uh, the fifth grade on the, the slide, it's, it tells me that thirty percent are on or above level there, on reading, I'm sorry.
On reading, yes.
Thirty percent of our students, then seventy per- the other seventy percent are either one year below or, or two or more.
Yeah, that is correct. That is correct.
Yeah, so that's, that's what concerns me is we're s- we're doing the stretch, because let's say a fifth grader in, in September was on the first grade level. And then he, he's now working on these
Third grade.
Third grade level. And so are we saying he's going to be on the fifth grade level at the beginning of the fifth grade level at the end of the year or what?
That's not what this is saying.
I know, I, I, that's what I'm.
No.
Yeah, that is not, I mean.
This is measuring the individual growth of that student.
But he could still be, at the end, at the end of the year, he could be working on, uh, he's a fifth grader going on to the sixth grade. And he could be working on the third grade level when we promote him on to the sixth grade.
Possibly.
Possibly, yes.
Well, he could be working on the fourth grade level, which just shows his progression.
I know, I know, it's, yeah.
You're saying that they would be.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, and then if we look at the I Ready Math, typical growth for, uh, one year's growth and the stretch growth for more than one year's growth. Uh, twenty three percent of our students at this point in time have already met their typical growth. Um, and seven percent of our students have met their stretch growth in math.
And what, math just a, we, we've had trouble with math for quite a while.
We have, and I think, I think at different levels, it, I think first and foremost, especially as we move up in, 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 uh, the grade, it goes back to us retaining, um, uh, certified math teachers. We have a lot of permanent substitutes. Um, you know, long-term subs in, in those positions, um, and, and that is a, you know, we do our best, I know we do our best, we're out there recruiting, um, certified math teachers all the time. But then it's also, it's, it's two-fold, it's, it's the recruitment and then it's the retention. And so I feel that that does impact our scores. Um, when we look at grades four and five, once again, just like, you know, those students miss the foundational pieces, um, in, in reading. These are students that also miss those foundational pieces in math with, with, uh, their, you know, the number sense. So, um, there are going to be gaps, but you know, the goal is, is to determine where the gaps are, remove the barriers and, 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 and present those on-grade level lessons to ensure we are closing those gaps.
Any special question? And I don't mean to put you on the spot because you might not know any of this part of it. Um, we use I Ready as an assessment, but then why do we not use I Ready, uh, for the reading and math?
It was, uh, it was not, I don't really remember, I don't know if it was a choice back when we did the reading adoption. I don't think it was a choice when we did the reading adoption. Uh, right now, it is a choice, it is one of the, uh, programs that's out there that they just did vendor days on, on, uh, Saturday. And if they were there presenting, so it, it will be a choice that our teachers will, will have to select from. And Ann Lasky, uh, is running that or chairing that, and she has the committee of teachers that will do that. And in, in it, the, the decision is a, a committee process by the teachers. So, uh, they, they've got through numerous, um, math, um, presentations on, on Saturday. But even without that, yes, it is an assessment, but it, it does have tools based on how the students score. It does have tools currently that our teachers can use based on how the student perform on that assessment to determine where their weaknesses are. And it has tools to plan lessons, create an instructional plan for those students. And it will also then allow us to make, um, small groups, a small flexible groups of students so that they can provide instruction. So even though we don't necessarily have it as a curriculum right now, there are tools that are available to all of our teachers to, as I said, make the data more actionable and go in and plan lessons using, um, the tools. And, and so it really helps support and lift the teachers in terms of that question after they get the data, what next? This provides that what next piece, but that, Hannah, do you want to say anything?
No, that's correct.
Okay, my question, my question. Be pretty long, yeah, for a question.
It, you know, every, every, yeah, it's a great question. Every year vendors change because different companies buy up different, each other. And so every year, you know, the vendors are always different. Um, but this year, um, and I'm not sure where I Ready was at last, last time, but I know this time it, it is there and we, you know, it will be one of the choices we are looking at.
Thank you.
Mr. Rory? So to be honest, I, I was going to make a comment you mentioned about the certified teachers. I think that's one aspect, just not having a certified staff, but it's also, I think as a society and as people, we, a lot of people are intimidated by math. Or if you continue to tell your child math is hard, then they'll get into the head, that math is hard.
It all adds together. It all adds together. You're right.
Every, everything is perception and, and I love years ago, the state had this, um, platformed up with Math I Can. And, you know, and I remember in readings that I did years ago, it was talking about how, um, no one will admit if they were a struggling reader or have struggled with reading, that people almost wear it as a badge of courage, it's like, oh, I can't do math, you know? And so it's just our society, the way we, we approach it. So I think, I think if we really, I think if it's, if we really, you know, start with our students and let them know, you know, that they are mathematicians. You know, from a very early age. And I, I know in some of the trainings and, and things that we've done over the years, I remember watching one presentation where this, with the video that they shared, that the teacher called her student scholars. I love that idea, you know, just anything to make them feel that confident because it goes back to self-confidence. And being willing to be a risk taker. And, you know, and sometimes, you know, in math, sometimes when you have that alphabet soup in front of you, so to speak, sometimes when you get to the higher level, you have to be willing to take a risk and plug different numbers in and, and, and to figure out the equation, but you have to. Um, so there's a lot that goes into it. I can tell you also too, this is sort of towards the end of my presentation, the state is also looking at our math standards. And right now, I know, I think the biggest change will be in eighth grade, but I know that they are doing some alignment work with our, with our state math standards. And that's when we open the year in the fall, um, some of our grade levels will have some significant change, maybe eighth grade will have the most. But they're, they are looking and addressing to make sure our standards are more aligned as, as well. So I think it's about always constantly asking that question, why, and drilling down to the root cause and try to figure out, hey, well, what should be our next move? Where do we need to go next? How do we solve these problems? Because at the end of the day, we are here for the students and we want our students to grow. We want them to succeed. We want them to be able to have those multiple pathways to success and have any choices that they want. So, um, we're working on it.
Robert, you want to hit those, um, this slide and the next one?
Yes.
Quick.
Uh, okay, this is one of those, um, this is the slide, this is from the reading perspective and, and if we all, and Mr. Murphy, I know you're always wondering, well, how does this translate to how are we going to do on this, on the state some kind of assessment? So right now, in the data that we have, um, from this mid-year benchmark, if a hundred percent of our students were to reach typical growth, um, third grade would be thirty nine percent proficient on the state assessment, fourth grade would be thirty six, and fifth grade would be forty three percent proficient in terms of a protection, protection based on our data right now. Um, and then if we have our students hitting our stretch growth, we would be like, third would be forty nine percent, fourth would be forty two percent, and fifth would be fifty percent. So this is objective projection based on our current data. If a hundred percent of the students either made their typical growth or a hundred percent of the students would make their stretch growth. Uh, and so this can change, but this, if, uh, uh, this is an alignment a little bit so that you can sort of see or have a visual in terms of what it could look like for the, um, for the state assessment. And then here is a picture for, just it's not moving. And then if you just flip your stock slide, you can then see, um, you can then see what it would look like for math.
The stretch growth is better than the typical growth.
Yes, the, the stretch growth is a little bit more challenging for our students, but it, it truly is obtainable. This touches, thank you, okay, thank you. All right, any questions? Because I'm getting ready to transition from I Ready.
I just wanted back to the question I asked you.
Okay.
I, um, Mr. Murphy and I sat in with the I Ready presentation.
Yes.
I, I was so impressed with.
They did an outstanding job.
Oh, wow, and the principals were engaged.
Yes.
And.
And, and that's what I, when, when I told you in terms of, of just being impressed with them as, as a vendor, because that what, what they give, what they give our principals, they give us at the district level as well because we sit in, so we're all on the same page. But those same presentations are, are being given to our teachers and our teachers are very engaged and, and embracing the data and really using the data because we can have all the data we want, but if we don't use it, make changes, we're always going to get what we've always gotten. So I really feel like we have made excellent strides to date with our I Ready. Kennedy, for the IXL, do you want to add anything?
No, um, and with the, um, growth that we've made, uh, just within the first year, this is, this is new for us. And, you know, anything new, uh, offers some challenges and some changes. Um, but our students have done great with it. The staff development, um, has been really well with received. Um, after each benchmark, uh, their company comes in and sits down with the team of teachers and gives over the data and helps them with that. We've never had that before. Um, and the outstanding thing about this whole platform is it aligns with our West Virginia standards. And they pride themselves on that and that shows. So it, it's, it's been really good for us at this point. I'm very satisfied with it.
So we're going to transition to IXL Math and ELA and the comparison between the fall to the later benchmark. This is not new, this is, I think, our third year that we've been, that we've been doing IXL in the classroom at grades six through, um, eleven. And when we look at the data, you can see the, the fall to the winter, um, growth that's occurring. If we look over here, if you remember, and I always pointed that when I talk about IXL, a ten point equal one, one month growth. So when we look at the chart, we can see that, that sixth grade is, has made four point nine months worth of growth. Uh, seventh grade has three point seven, eighth has three point four, ninth grade has three point one, tenth grade has four point six, and eleventh grade has four point one. So you can sort of see our rock stars that are close to that five month mark. All right, if we were to do some rounding, it would be sixth grade and, and tenth grade. Um, that would be on mark to be right at that, that five month mark for one year's worth of growth. But the one thing though, that I would like to point out, typically when I stand in front of you and we are really looking at like grades ten and eleven, we typically have seen negative numbers in the past. So I would really like to commend the work that's happening at, at the second, at the high school level. Uh, it, there has been a shift and they have embraced it. And I also think it's because it also has a component where they can put in their PSAT scores or their SAT scores, and it will give them a personalized plan to also, also to, to, to work as well. And it will give them a personalized plan to also, also to, to, to work as well. Colleen, do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, we were just a little disjointed at the secondary level. We were using Khan Academy, we were using IXL. And this year, the principals got together and decided to go all the way in with IXL. Um, and like Robin said, the personalized plan is, is fantastic. And Colleen, that is from IXL, actually put all those scores in for the students, uh, for the staff, so, um.
Yeah, and she's also, uh, uh, Dr. Carleen, is it Bert, Bert? Is it Bert? She's also doing a, a very good job in terms of, of taking time to also provide some on, on hands-on PD for our principals.
Every, every instructional meeting she, she's in, and the, uh, that was another thing, the principal's confidence level for them going in and getting the data and seeing who's using it and who, um, you know, needs to get caught up there in it every week. So that's, it's, it's been a huge buy-in.
Yeah, and I really commend them for their change, their, their shift in mindset. Jackie?
Um, do you know if, uh, I know one middle school told me they did this, uh, for like a fifth period remediation that their students, uh.
Everybody knew that a little differently. Um, some do it in their core or their callback, they call it. Um, they've got a lot of incentives that they're doing, um, class competition, some are doing school competitions. I know Mount Ridge and Muscleman Metal were competing. So that's actually our agenda, uh, Wednesday, to steal some ideas from each other.
Okay, because I, I know I can be stalked in with that.
So you know, the older they get, the harder they are to.
Yeah.
All right, and then here is then the ELA picture, um, for, um, IXL. And then you can see that really, it's really grade six, sixes is on track to make more than a year's worth of growth. And then we have grades nine and ten that are close to being right where they need to be in terms of, of that, that five-month growth that we round up. So, and you know, in, for the ELA, we see a little bit bigger picture there in terms of three, three grade levels versus two. Um, and once again, once again, you can see the growth there at, at the high school level. Um, in terms of usage and, and emphasis on it, just by, by seeing the scores alone in terms of what we have looked at in the past. Um, the last section in terms of data that we're looking at with College Board, um, is the PSAT eight, nine, and PSAT NMSQT for grades ten and eleven. Um, the one thing that I can tell you this year, as we move into College Board and, and data from College Board and the assessment itself. It has a new format this year. It's always been paper pencil, and now it is digital. Uh, they shortened the test, so it might be just a little over two hours, so it's, it's not as extensive as it used to be. The calculator can be used throughout. And then also, uh, the reading passages are shorter and the passage that the student reads, then the questions that are regular, are from that passage, the answers are there. It's not like they have to read multiple and, and cross-reference. So, um, so that is a change, uh, for College Board, uh, nationwide. Um, and that's not just, uh, specific to West Virginia. Um, when we look at the data for this, um, I am giving you baseline data for this year's grade nine students for grades eight. And they took the gift AT eight, nine for grade nine in the new digital format. So you can see this is the total, the total, the average for the total. This is the average for the reading and writing, and this is the average for the math. And you can see how we at the district are comparing to state, and then all test data, suppose, both nationally and internationally. Uh, and you can see that we are performing, um, slightly below the state.
Now, we do it for everyone and all testers.
We do, yes, we do, we do this twice, for grade nine, we do it fall and spring, all grade nine. And then grade ten, um, in this fall, in the spring for all grade ten. Grade eleven, all grade eleven in the fall. But then in the spring, grade eleven takes the SAT School Day, which is the, the summative assessment.
But in other states, where you have the all testers, uh, is, this is an optional test.
Yes, and, and honestly, this is optional. The PSAT is optional in West Virginia. Not all districts in West Virginia choose to do the PSAT eight, nine for grade nine. Or the PSAT NMSQT for grades ten and eleven. Although I would think the majority of our state will encourage it because of their scholarship opportunities in the fall, especially for grade eleven with the PSAT NMSQT.
But, but my, my point, not to be arguing or anything. The all testers in some states, it's just the brightest and the best take the tests. And not all general students are taking the test.
Yeah.
Whereas general and the bright, uh, the advanced students or college bound students.
Yes, that is correct. And that really, that applies even more so when they look at our SAT School Day data, that yes, you are correct. The way I did the data for the, um, uh, fall twenty twenty, grade nine, and fall twenty twenty-three, grade ten, the same cohort of students. So this, these are the students, grade nine, this is how they performed on the PSAT, uh, eight, nine for grade nine. Same group of students on how they performed in the fall twenty twenty-three as tenth graders. So this is how they performed as ninth graders. This is how they performed as tenth graders. And you can see, you know, we have some, some small gains. Uh, nothing really that would be statistically significant, but significant, but there are some, um, small gains. But once again, we are, once again, performing below, uh, the state. But it's, once again, you are looking at same cohort of students. Here's how they performed as ninth graders. Here's how they performed as tenth graders. And if we turn to the next slide, once again, you're looking at same cohort of students. How they performed as tenth graders in fall of twenty twenty-two. How they performed as eleventh graders in fall of twenty twenty-three. And probably when you look here, you, you will see our most significant growth here, um, from fall twenty twenty-two to fall twenty twenty-three. But once again, we are, um, uh, below, uh, the state. But at least you're looking at, I tried to do this as cohort of students. So you're looking at same, same groups of students. And then, um, kind of wrapping things up in terms of some bright spots, in terms of iReady, some bright spots that I pulled out for you from BOY, which stands for Beginning of the Year, to MOY, which stands for Middle of the Year. Thirteen schools had fifty percent or more of their students improving at least one grade placement level. Me, meaning moving from two years below, maybe up to one year below, or move from one year below up to on or above. So we had thirteen schools with fifty percent or more of their students at least making, uh, that positive or improving at least by one placement. Um, fifth grade had the highest percentage of students, meaning their typical growth in reading at thirty-nine percentage points. And in math at twenty-six percentage points. Third and fourth grades had the highest, highest stretch growth in reading. So both third and fourth grade each had fifteen percentage points in terms of, of stretch growth, meaning stretch growth. And that was the highest out of K-five, um, for those two. Kindergarten had the highest stretch growth in math at forty-two, uh, uh, percentage points. And then the most growth in terms of looking at the reading domains, in terms of what is actually being tested. Kindergarten in third grade had the most growth in phonics. And first and second grade had the most growth in high-frequency words. And most growth in, uh, in math. Uh, we had kindergarten, second and fourth had the most growth in numbers and operations. And we had first, third, and fourth having the most growth in algebra and algebraic thinking. And so fourth grade, which is one of those typical grades that had really lacking of foundation, um, from, from the COVID, uh, years. They had the most growth both in number and operations and in algebraic thinking in, in the math domains. So those were just some bright spots I wanted to point out, um, in addition to just looking at the data. When we look at IXL, um, for our bright spots, our median growth, um, is approximately four months in ELA and math. So we're maybe, we're one month behind, um, you know, overall, uh, in terms of, of being on track for that one year's worth of growth. Grade six, our economical disadvantaged students grew, um, four months in math, and they grew six point seven months in ELA. Our grade seven had the highest growth in numbers and operations strand with, uh, five months, a little over five months. Eighth grade else, uh, English learners, um, a student, English learners, but yeah, let me rephrase that. English language students grew, uh, five months, five point eight months in vocabulary. And they grew four point four months overall in math. Uh, grade nine students grew the most in, uh, the algebra strand, uh, five point six months. And they had, they had the highest growth in reading strategies at six point nine months. Grade ten, our English language students grew six point three months in grammar mechanics. And overall, in grade ten, geometry had the highest growth of, of a little over one year to date. And then grade eleven, our English learners, um, grew, uh, five point nine months in algebra. And then overall, in grade eleven, the writing strand had the highest growth with four point nine months. So one thing that Hannah consistently came out when I was looking at the data. In, our English learners, they are part of our accountability system. They are one of our measures that we look at. And they had some, uh, most significant growth on our iReady as we've been drilling down, um, with that. And so this is, Mr. Murphy, kind of circling back full circle to like, okay, now what? We've looked at the data, we've seen a lot of data, we've had a lot of discussion, so now what's our next step? So we're going to start with the continued partnership with Model Schools, which has been outstanding this year. Um, our focus has been on rigor and relationships. We did just a small snippet here recently on our most recent professional learning day with them on learner engagement and relevance. But we really have hit hard the, the, the relationship aspect and building relationships, um, at all levels. From the district level to the building level, to the classroom, to home. Um, rigor has also been something that we've embraced this year. And when we talk about rigor and what does that look like and sound like, they, they have three components to that. They talk about thoughtful work, they talk about higher order questioning, and they talk about academic discussion. That thoughtful work is being very, our teachers being very intentional and purposeful in what we're planning for our students. And making sure they're using their standards, um, to guide their work. And that we're planning lessons at the right level of rigor to make sure that, that, that academic piece is, is hitting our mark. Um, we have then, um, if we look at the next piece of that, we have, um, also too, with the, with the, with the work with Model Schools. They're also helping our lens when we go into the classroom to help us know that our, uh, do we know what rigor looks like in the classroom? And, and do we see it? And, and how do we create it? And how do we support it from the district level and from the building level? And in the classroom, um, our next piece that we're looking at is, uh, provide building level supports. And so we are doing that through professional development. We have the professional development in place for our new iReady, um, work that we just talked about. We have professional development, um, monthly for our principals with the IXL. And we also have professional development support from College Board to help us understand the reports, how to use the reports, how to use it to change instruction. Um, the professional development goes beyond the assessments. The state has embraced the science of reading. So, uh, many of us have been trained on the science of reading and have done multiple sessions back here at the district level. And we, uh, I know, um, Mrs. Beckman and I, myself do a cohort, um, for grades K-five on this, on the science of reading. And we've been doing that monthly. Uh, walkthroughs, walkthroughs have been significant for us, um, in helping to support the principals. And that is also being done through Model Schools. So there are times where we'll go out and we'll walk, and we use the same rubric, that, the regular rubric that Model Schools provided. And we'll walk through with the principals and we'll talk about what they're seeing and what, and, and do, are we, are, are we looking through the same lens? Are we seeing the same things? But also, we're also building our capacity because we have joined forces with the coaches assigned to the buildings. So now we are meeting with the building level, the coach assigned to the building from Model Schools, the principal. And those of us that are assigned to specific buildings. So we're building our capacity and we're working and we're growing so that we're all on the same page. So that we're providing this constant or consistent look, um, in terms of our expectations. Um, share, joining leadership and data team meetings, and then also supporting strategic plan work with the principals. So these are some of the things that we're trying to do to help build and support, um, our, our administrators and our teachers. And, and which in turn then will free them up to then do the, the other work that's important that they need to do. And finally, to ensure district-wide consistency with curriculum, assessment, and instruction. I think we've done a really good job of the, the, the alignment with the assessment, district-wide, in terms of expectations with the curriculum. Um, this year, uh, and this was driven, I think, very teacher-driven for us. And we listed and we embraced it with the, um, UFLI and the Hagerty, especially at the primary level with the phonics and the phonemic awareness programs, programs that are there. But also too, in terms of, and this came out of Model Schools, to really make sure our teachers and our administrators, um, are familiar with our standards and our curriculum maps. And, and when we do our walkthroughs, are what we're seeing, is it matching our standards? Is it matching our curriculum maps? For example, I can tell you when I did my walkthroughs, uh, last week in, in two of my buildings. I know in the curriculum maps right now, this time of year, my intermediate schools should be working on opinion writing. And, and when I went through two of my buildings, as we were going through the, the, the English language direction section of the day. They were working on opinion writing. So I can, I, that tells me, I'm able to check in my mind to say, they are following the curriculum maps. They are following the expectations that's been set forth by the district with fidelity. And if we're going to move this and move it and, and, and make the growth and make the gains. We have to stop being a district of schools, and we need to be a school district. And those curriculum maps and those casing guides, guides are work from building to building, classroom to classroom. Teachers still have the autonomy to, to do, you know, and, and plan. And they're empowered to, to do how they, what they want to do that opinion piece on, or how they want to do the opinion writing. I saw different things in different classrooms and, and, and in different buildings. But that, that district-wide inconsistency is huge in moving us forward from the curriculum. And teachers knowing their standards, using their standards, and holding, being, you know, having the fidelity to the standards by, by nine weeks. The assessment piece we talked about, and that instruction piece goes back to truly understanding that rigor. And, and that we're, we're, we're planning with, being intentional and purposeful in our planning. And that we are meeting our students at the right level rigor. Just like I told Superintendent Stevens before we came in here, part of that is working on question. If I ask you, who are the four main characters of The Wizard of Oz, what would you tell me? Michael, please tell me, sing a movie. But, okay, but if I shifted that and I said to you, why did the author choose to give the lion the characteristic of power this? And why? Justify your answer. Okay, those are two very different ways of thinking. You're going to be more tired coming up with your answer for the second question than you were for the fourth one. And that's the shift we want to see in our classrooms. And that starts with the work that Model Schools is doing with us with rigor and spoken questioning. We don't have to, guess what? Questioning is free. It's all about how we design and teach our teachers how to ask those questions. We don't need to go out and buy a program. We don't need to go out and buy a tool. We don't need to go out to teachers, pay teachers. It's free. And it could be, it's the hugest lift in increasing rigor and expectations. Which then, that should then carry over into our student achievement. So that's, that's sort of everything that I have for you at this point at mid-year. I'll be back at, end of year, probably for the end of the year report. But, um, overall, I think in terms of what we're seeing, we are seeing growth. And we are seeing pockets of significant growth.
So, uh, thank you, Robin. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Robin?
Yes, we do. Okay, I do. Sorry. I happened to be visiting a school when, with, with somebody from Model Schools was there. Model Schools, it's for three years, right?
Well, it's right now currently for one, with the option to be three. Right now, my understanding.
That's the goal. It's to do it all three years.
Because, Mr. Murphy, it's just like with anything, you're not going to see significant change with one year. It takes three to five years to see significant change, because we have to really begin to invent a process to work with the way you just automatically do business.
Well, they, and I was impressed by sitting there with the gentleman from Montgomery County, uh, at Rosemont. But the, the concern I have, and you, you touched upon it. People from the board office are going out to be part of this process. Because if we just train our principals, then you won't have the leadership of the principals.
Correct.
Uh, being, uh, aware of what's going on and we get, and our investment could go down the drain. Especially if we lose a principal here or two there, hopefully we don't. But, uh, that, that's my concern is I, I want to make sure that we have the gears mesh between the board office. People being, uh, chatting. How many people in the board office are being involved? People being uh challenged, how many people in the board office are being involved in interlocking with this?
I would say everyone that falls under.
There are thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
And like, for example, I have four schools and and that I've been, I've been walking with and working and meeting with. And and it's been a unique opportunity to to be able to to learn because it's building my capacity as well. But you are correct, if if this is going to be systemic, everyone needs to be involved in the process.
Yeah, I I didn't see anybody there from the board office at this time when I was there, and I I thought, well, whoa, how, how do you?
It could have been if it was early fall.
No, this is just a month ago.
Oh, so the principal got the opportunity to let us know where they wanted us to come into their school with the instructional coach. From Model Schools, so if they weren't there in January, it will be the next visit for sure. So that has been worked out with the principal and the department.
Yeah, and and we we, uh, cause I remember when we adopted this, we directed you want to take something away from the principal's. An obligation, so they could put their time into this, and that was the other size.
And so let me say the department has done walkthroughs since the beginning of the school year. Not necessarily when the model schools coach was there, okay? Um, so that has happened as well.
Okay, now my second question, and this is, um. The students are two or more years behind.
Correct.
And you have the curriculum maps, where you have the time schedule, where uh, at this date, we're moving on. I don't, no matter where you are here, the student, we're moving on. Do they, I would suppose it's a building system, you have to have this in order to do that. What what can we say that those students who are, didn't get. Plank A, and now their, the calendar says we're on plank B. How are they going to succeed on plank B when they didn't succeed at plank?
Well, we we continue to have small group instruction, we have guided math in place, we have, um, you know, guided reading in place. That also then, eh, you know, some skill-based groups, we have intervention in place. Um, so we have our interventionists that are there that that support the work. And all all that, those who some of our M T S as well, so we have our, and we have our our title services that support and push in. So we have a lot of support that that's in place to to work with those students that. Who did not master it, it's not like we're just mi- mi- hitting it and moving on, you know. We we have lots of scaffolding, for lack of a better way in place, we have a lot of scaffolding in place to support. Our students who are not where they need to be.
And the next question, my final question.
Aren't you sure?
Depends on your answer. But now, now, I'm pretty sure. Um, budgets, we're working on the budget now. We're going to have all the COVID money going and everything else. What is in that area that we have to be looking at to try to continue the progress?
That's out of my will help, that that's Mrs. Burkhardt's will, will help, but and I did it there in talks in terms of 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 figuring out ways. To continue and support many of our initiatives.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, great, Jackie.
I just had a question about walkthroughs, cause I've had some principals. Um, tell me that, I don't know, some walkthroughs or somebody just comes to the office. Stays a few minutes and.
You know, Jackie, I I cannot answer for everyone, I can only answer for myself. And so, um, you know, normally the principal is always invited to do the walkthrough with me. If they're busy or if they have a friend and they can't do it, then then I, then I would continue to do to do the walkthroughs. And then my goal before I leave that day, I I try to make sure I I be brief with them so I can have a conversation about what I saw. And once again, if they're not free at that time, um, then I will either schedule a photograph back, I would meet with them. But then we also send them their data so that if we don't actually have a time to have that face-to-face. Um, or at least I, you know, and I think that this is the expectation that's set by the department. That, you know, then we send them their data. And so, um, you know, to date, I've done both walkthroughs in in my buildings that are assigned to me. As well as then the walkthroughs with the model schools most recently, um, last week, I was, I was out in the back of the buildings doing those. So I can only speak for myself, but there there are processes in place in terms of expectation, in terms of 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 what we are to do.
If I could follow up, um, with that, um, we gave the principals an option. Um, we were going to do the walkthroughs and they had an option of doing the walkthroughs with us or not. The majority of the principals insisted on doing the walkthroughs with the department. Um, so that was their choice, now regard, and that's great, that is actually great. Um, if something happens in a building or they can't do it or whatever. The members of teaching and learning would still do those walkthroughs and then that data would be sent to the principal to use as they wish to use it. So that was very clear in the beginning.
And also another piece that I didn't, I didn't share, we are also helping to support them, monitor their already data.
Yes.
So so the same schools that I that I am assigned to, in it, you know, for specifically for model schools for my walkthroughs. Uh, those are also my schools for for already, and I I have the opportunity to where I go in and I kind of look for bright spots. I forget what we call them, like, like, you know, like maybe three stars to wish, but we kind of go through and 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 and. But it's just for the principal's eyes only, and then they can go out and address the the teachers with that feedback that I provide them. So that is something else that we are also going to try to help support our administrators.
Well, I just want to make sure that, um. The thirteen people that you had on that are supposed to be doing the walkthroughs are actually doing the walkthroughs. And, um. That's my concern. I've been getting, and it wasn't from somebody who would, that I might be getting it from, but it wasn't from there.
I would like to think that they've gotten the message, you know, it it has been conveyed that way, um. But if a principal is, has a concern, that they have all been invited to go with. Our people from the county office that are in those buildings, um. So that they, number one, can see what's what's taking place, and number two, um. Can provide assistance if they, if they need to on those. I'm not sure, uh. Just saying, I I'm not sure that if they don't go on those walkthroughs. Um. Who's telling them that they're not?
Well, you're you're missing my point. My point is that you can't walk through with somebody that stays a few minutes and leaves, that's my, you, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So, um, and I, I'm just telling you what I've been told.
And and I I can just tell you that I I being, this is.
If that is taking place.
Very clear, she's been very specific, she's been very clear of what her expectations are. Of us in the department in terms of of walkthroughs.
And if that is taking place, it needs to be corrected, so we need to know who and where and we can address it.
Well, or dress it up to the next principal's kindly, that who's being, listen, if this is a crime, we need to know.
Well, just just provide us with a list of the thirteen people and the schools they're assigned, and then when we're out and we're talking, we'll just ask. Okay?
We could, we could talk about that, I'm not sure that that's your role as a board. That have their individual names and to go check on that, I I think we need to remember this is a policymaking body.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, we did, that's exactly the right way to do it, but uh, to let us, to steer those people to us if they have questions.
Yeah.
Well, it's also, as board anyone, we're spending one point two million on this process, right?
No, not on this process, she's referring to the people from here.
No, no, I know, but but. Yeah, model, model schools, and 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 I disagree. If 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 this system is working and we're told that. There's this intermeshing with this, the thirteen people in these thirty-two schools. And I I don't see where we're out of order to ask a principal, have you seen this person? And have you asked the the questions that Ms. Burkhardt sends? And I still think that, uh, it's just public record, we're spending money. We have this job going on, we're watching the system and, um, I'll entertain a motion if it's, it may not be. It would be another meeting, but, um, I I've, I'm requesting that this board be given the names of the people and the schools they're assigned.
Well, and I'm not, um.
Some part discussed later.
Yeah, I know, I I didn't want to. Open up a can of worms, I would just ask that if that is is an issue, and I'm not, you know, there's always two stars to every score. Uh, so that's what I'm saying. Yeah, let's make sure if they're signed into walkthroughs that they're actually doing the walkthroughs. Or, um, that's the one time to do the walkthroughs.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we will get the list then. Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, because I know, I know you put in a lot of time preparing this meeting, because we have another step that we want to go on. And, um, um, I want to, uh, express the board's appreciation of the amount of work you did there. And second thing is, we do see improvement.
Yeah.
Yes.
We do see, and that's, that's very.
Yeah, it was good.
It's very positive, yeah, it's very positive.
I have two quick questions, or I can't remember, are the special education students tested the, uh, this menu benchmark?
Oh, all students, all stu- all students were tested in, um, for already K five. All students were tested, um, in grade six through eleven. Um, so.
That documentation, I should include it.
And so, so, and and when I said high-level data, this is the all. The, you know, I I am working for the schools and I'm drilling it down to their demographics, so the schools will will have their demographic data. And I have no problem with wish, with, you know, sharing that with you, whether I just provide it to, just to give to you and put to review. If you have questions or to to come back and and look at drilling down deeper. But I think sometimes when I give so much data, we kind of get very in the weeds, and I wanted to just kind of focus that at this high level to really emphasize the growth that we're seeing for all. So today's picture was really all students.
Any other questions?
Yeah, question, I'm a question.
Oh, virtual school?
Virtual school, uh, virtual, uh, um, yes, virtual schools included in that, and they were one of the thirteen schools that had fifty percent. Or, um, uh, students, um, whatever that was, I forget my 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 spotlight on that. But I, the one that on this, I think, um, yeah, already that that thirteen, that very first bullet, like thirteen, let me look back through here. Like, just can't think off the top of my head right now. Um. But yeah, the thirteen schools, um, on on page twenty-one, slide twenty-one. Thirteen schools have fifty percent or more of their students improving at least one placement level, one or above. That that includes that one, a virtual school of one of those thirteen schools, so yes, their data is included.
Um, I don't know if we can get a monitoring item, but I'm interested for upcoming monitoring for the virtual school. Uh, cause I saw this, the assessment for the Western Union Virtual Academy.
We have a coming, uh, in there, the first meeting in March of this. I think it's what we discussed.
And off of the top of my head, they they had, they had, they had strong growth.
Okay, cause I was looking at the Western Union Virtual Academy in there, their percentage of students, some grades were zero. Students, yeah, were proficient in math three. And I still don't know.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that what that is that is, I, I, Mrs. Branch takes care of that, so I'm really not sure with that. But they are included in our already in our Excel. You're welcome.
Ms. Power, do you have any questions on?
Uh, no, actually, a couple of them had already been asked by, um, other members of the board, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. I was just making comments, since if, since our students are included in that, um, that's good, I would make growth compared to other platforms. Other avenues of education, but that's a, to say that's a good sign.
It is.
It's good for, um, it's system.
I guess. And I, I mean, I feel, I feel very positive with what, uh, you you saw today.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, Jackie.
For students, so you want to make any clues or comments for some of your students?
I I do, I did want to, uh, draw to the board's attention, there was a question about. Uh, giving a diploma honorary or otherwise to, uh, people, um. Uh, on special occasions, and there, there really is not an honorary diploma, it's either diploma or not. Or, whoa, some certificate of achievement. Um, there are processes where, um. Someone like Mr. Harris or, um, uh, others can apply. Um, there, that's mainly, uh, uh, actually, it's mainly for our military, but there are other hardships. Um, that I I believe could be considered, and that's largely due to Mr. Martin's. Um, yeah. Um, policy, recommendation last year that that we did, but, um. Anyway, I just wanted to be be clear, we can't really give a diploma, or we could give us, um. A certificate of appreciation or something like that, we can't really call it a diploma.
Right.
Um, but that was it, that's all I want to say, and I did want to thank Robin and, uh, everyone for pulling together this data. Um, you know, it's, we've worked hard for a year and a half since we've been here, the first summer, uh, coming on board, working with with. With you guys and and our bond. I did not forget that we had talked about, um, you know, critical thinking and and thinking skills and rigor in our classrooms. That was the very first thing that that was brought to my attention, actually in June before I took office in July of two thousand twenty-two. And we have carried that on, uh, along with the relationships that that they had talked about, and those things we are seeing some growth in. Um, I think the, with the assistance of model schools, we are able to put into, into place. Some professional development to help our schools and to help our our people with that. It was one thing to be able to identify and to be able to, um, describe it and define it. That was another thing to be able to, uh, make those adjustments in the classroom and and to see, see the growth. So I think that we're on a, on a very good path with that, and I appreciate Robin presenting that data to you today. And it includes, you you, she talked about going into classrooms and seeing, um, in the E L A. Uh, standards, um, people that were, are are, um, curriculum maps. Where they were on track, that also included times where I I spoke with some people who went up and observed in our math classes and our curriculum maps didn't align. So we're working on making the, those, uh, those tweaks to get them to align, so. It's an ongoing process, and I just wanted to say thanks to to everybody for pulling that together, so appreciate it on such short notice. That was it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Long and second by Mr. Martin, all those in favor, signify by the saying aye. Hey, I almost haven't declared a motion about.